Have the telephone number that you go?
He has it, I sent it to him.
Down to get his ass down here. I don't know, Nancy, because you're moving.
Let's sit down here.
I don't think he shut them off.
I guess that New York number, the 99 number is the best one.
I think Scott is getting the mic.
Two hundred and five.
I think Scott takes the roll call.
Six zero nine nine, three nine nine.
No, we didn't.
Meeting ID is right there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's there, something like that.
Yeah.
But they're gonna do that in case of coming in at.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But they don't do it because they learn not to do it.
And they'll keep talking.
No.
Yeah.
Actually, it's sad, too. That's what your mother would do.
Terry, do we have anybody waiting to be admitted?
They're only four weeks old. My granddaughter broke for her five now. Four or five.
You buy them a peach?
Pounds and a half. Or cheese.
That's the one you pull in, right?
Yeah.
Maybe put mom with the dogs. The other one's dumb.
He got it, he's not on the medicine. Not on the pills. I don't know. We have to be happy for him all. Yeah, the, 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 not dance. Do the pump on the floor. We already screwed anything up.
Yeah.
Things get high. It's going all over the place.
Can't hold that anchor if you're trying to anchor down.
No.
She just pushes right up the morning.
Bob? Hi, it's Scott Mitchell, how are you? Okay, you want to just dial in by audio? Okay, do you need the number or do you have it?
Scott, can you hear me? It's Mayor Day.
Hi, Mayor Day. Yes.
It's something about that principal discipline, yeah. I think somebody's using a crazy mischaracter or something.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, change is each time, sorry about that. All right, so Bob, you have the meeting ID and passcode or do you need it? Oh yeah, it's probably different. Okay, here, you want to jot this down? Because it went out yesterday morning, I believe. The meeting ID is seven two eight, zero seven three, two nine one eight. And the passcode's two five six, three three four. No problem, we'll see, we'll talk to you shortly. All right, thanks, bye bye. Hi Mayor, thanks for your patience, we're slowly assembling folks here.
Okay, I thought you were waiting on people, I was doing bad stuff, but I'm not the only one.
No, no, you're in good company. So I think Mr. Paul's not, oh, Justin. No.
I have no idea.
Okay. Mayor, if you can hang on another minute, Mr. Paul's dialing in because he's having computer issues. And then I think we'll be ready. I'll do it, but it works.
Hello?
Is that you, Mr. Paul?
Yep.
Okay, good, well, we have the mayor, we have Mr. Paul by Zoom, and everybody else is in the house except for Mr. Bowers. So, Mr. President, it's
Okay, thank you.
Up to you, how you want to.
I'm going to call to order the Borough of Marsville Borough Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, October twenty seventh. Can you please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, under His will, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia, are you with us?
Yes.
You want to do the roll call?
Yeah. Mayor Reveller?
I'm here, on the phone.
Councilman Bowers? Councilwoman Drive-Buck?
Here.
Councilwoman Lamo?
Here.
Councilman Ted Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Here. Okay.
Okay, and our borough solicitor is here, Scott?
Yes, I am here, thank you.
Okay, and our borough manager, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. There are no announcements as far as I know tonight. No public comment. There's no approval in minutes, no finance reports, no reports. We're gonna move right to nine, which is the action items for the mayor's attention.
Hold up, Mr. Parker, if I may. Scott Holbert, um, is there anyone in there for public comment? Or is that what you were saying, that no one's there?
There's no one here, no one present.
Okay.
Either.
Yeah, okay, that's fine then. Okay, you continue then.
Okay.
Please continue, thank you.
No problem. Nine C was a motion to adopt the 2021 fee schedule, which resulted in a tie. I'll defer to the mayor.
So it's, you're ready for me to call this, I guess, no discussion?
Do we want, do we have to have discussion? I bet it was just for the, I think it's just for, uh, Scott. Is, is it, do we need discussion or is it just for the mayor's attention?
It's just for the mayor's attention.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I will vote in favor of that then.
Okay. So that motion is approved. And then, uh, the next motion for the mayor's attention was a motion to authorize the administration to install GPS tracking devices on all borough vehicles at a national, at an initial estimated cost of $3,780 and an annual cost of $7,200 and authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Mayor?
Okay, um, I would like to make a comment. Was it more appropriate to do it after or before, being this is a unique circumstance?
Uh, it's appropriate to do it before.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to say for the record then that I agree with our managers that the, that the GPS is not necessary and that this cost is something I don't believe our borough can afford. Every police car is equipped with mobile police radio, that is GPS tracked by the county. Every police officer has a portable radio on their person that is GPS tracked by the county. The Verizon wireless hotspot that connects to the mobile data terminal is also GPS tracked, goes through the cell towers. It's my understanding very soon, sometime in 2021, the county will be introducing a new mobile data terminal system that'll also be tracking the vehicles in, uh, GPS in real time. The cost is approximately $10,000 with the annual fee for this GPS system. And I'm sure our council members, as well as the public, know that our police department does, currently has body cams. But what they may not know is Corporal Phil Smith recently leased over $14,000 to get new body cams that really the borough couldn't afford. And body cams are essential in today's world. And my point in raising up the body cams is we have a borough that's willing to entertain an idea of buying GPS that's not essential and I believe there's other things more beneficial to our department as well as our community. So for those reasons, I'm gonna vote against purchasing the GPS.
Okay, thank you Mayor, so that motion fails. And, uh, item ten is other business, do we have any other business?
Just that you have another special meeting after this one.
Yes, uh, I'll do that in Borough Officials. We move on to eleven, which is Borough Officials. I'm going to announce that we're having a special meeting immediately after this at 6:00 PM to go through the 2021 budget. Anybody else like to add anything?
A question, will that be televised?
Yes, it's, we're on now.
I just wasn't sure if it was just for this, that's why I was asking. Thank you.
As I'm not voting, I won't be wa, staying for the meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, move to twelve, uh, to adjourn this meeting, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Special meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We have, uh, about.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, yep. We have about fifteen minutes before the budget meeting starts, so take a little break?
Yes.
Have a good one, my friend.
Take care, Eileen.
Bye bye, Eileen.
Bye bye.
I was hoping so.
Well, we can't, can we, we can't successfully social distance down there.
I'm good here. I'm all right right here. Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna, it's being recorded, so you may wanna, we may wanna put, maybe try to put the mic down there.
Maybe, uh, like the handheld, do you mean?
Yeah.
I'm with Mike, I can stay right here as long as Scott doesn't mind me sitting in his chair.
Yes, I'm gonna speak to it when we reconvene the meeting.
This is just a, oh, so I adjourned that one, so we have to, will we, do I have to reopen it officially or no? Well, do I have to go through this again for the, no, no, I think it's all right.
No, it's just kinda like a work session.
Okay.
Thought Justin was gonna be here, but, um,
He may still show up for this, I don't know.
Yeah.
And those table mics aren't working.
Yeah, these are the ones, the wireless ones are the ones that are causing the feedback. So we can put one down there, but you're gonna hear this anytime we're talking to someone.
Need a translator.
I thought those table mics worked, don't they stopped working?
Well, did Bob drop off? Maybe he's working on getting his computer, uh...
You know, um, since there's just two more of you, do you want me to move back to my seat? And you guys can come up here? Well, I'd like to be able to spread out too, I agree.
Yeah, but I'd like to see you talk like one guy on the podium, which is more formal.
Yeah.
You have to kind of, um...
Well, hopefully those things will be fixed by tomorrow or soon. Sooner than later.
Oh, hi, Mr. Paul.
Made it.
Yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks to Ted, yeah, for some reason my, my Outlook mailbox won't open. It's frozen. So.
So you missed all the secrets we emailed you yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. No, because you know, whenever you send something on Outlook, I get it like coded on my regular mail. So I know something's there, I just can't read it. Very strange.
Sorry for having a meeting that you didn't do the GPS, like, that's the first adjustment we're gonna do tonight? I wouldn't adjust anything. Council can reconsider it if they want. Five minutes, sir?
Yep.
What would not get done?
Uh, if the, for the general fund specifically, or are you talking about all the above?
All of the above, like if we did not raise taxes eight point one.
Well, that would be up to council to consider when the borough runs out of money. So, for example, the library fund, just as a, for instance, if the library fund runs out of money, we will cease operations of the library. If the street lighting fund runs out of money, we will turn off the street lighting. If the street lighting fund runs out of money, we will turn off the streetlights. As for the general fund, if the general fund runs out of money, then, you know, the municipal government will cease operations.
Want your seat?
No, I'll sit here.
Thanks. So we'd be playing it kind of month by month, figure out what's going on?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's not much of an answer. I don't want to be rude, but that's not much of an answer. I mean, somehow they came up with these dollars to increase. So what is it that has happened to these dollars? Where is the balance? Where is the rationale for reporting out these dollars and what they're gaining from?
Okay, I think we discussed this in the finance committee meeting, that there's no new heads in this budget, that the budget increase is related largely to contractual obligations, health insurance, and other insurance costs, which go up every year. Basically, really, this is a status quo budget. There's not a whole lot of anything new in here.
So then, so then I guess I have some questions. Anyone else can chime in at any time. Like, I do have some questions about some of the dollars. So for instance, code enforcement, we have what our year-to-date is, we have what our past is, and it seems that the code enforcement between UNO, the UCC, the fire marshal, it seems to be split heavily, and how did you come up with that, if in the past, year-to-date, we didn't have that thing?
Well, we didn't. This used to be one-line item, and council requested it be divided to give you a better idea of what was being spent in each category, and we divided what was in the one-line item by the new categories.
Forty-eight thousand sixty-eight is turned against three, three different codes, but yet year-to-date, actually, and it's sixty-nine thousand, forty-five thousand, thirty-eight thousand. I guess my question is, and the same thing is happening with legal and with engineering fees, they're even in spent, but those categories, year-to-date. So I guess my question is, why would you do it that way, rather than prorate the percentage?
You mean, prorate the percentage over the new categories versus?
UNO is 50% of the total for code enforcement. Why budget not 50%? It's kind of even. It's in thirds.
If I may, if it's the same dollar amount, why would that matter? Overall, it's the same account and the same dollar amount. So if you're just, if you're just taking that same amount and reallocating it that way, you're not changing anything. You're still gonna, at the end of the...
Yeah, I know.
I always look at the total account amounts, because that's really where we live, right? In the total account amounts. If you're, if, if your total account amounts are right, anywhere within that account, you could move, right? You could move monies if you're spending more here and less here, and it's all in the same account. At the end of the day, that's where you want to balance out. So i-if that's where, what we're gonna sit here and do is try to figure out, in the same account, what line item should get the same amount of money. It's kind of a waste of time, right? Because it's still gonna be the same amount of money. We have two choices, really. We could cut back services and personnel, or we could raise taxes. In the past, the prior council cut back services and headcount, and we were able to, to level out the cost. If we're not willing to do that, this council needs to raise taxes, because there is contractual obligations that we're in that we need to take care of. It's really one of the two. Okay.
But I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna start tracking our expenses, for sure, the dollars should be in the conversation. Maybe it's a moot point for this year, but it really should be, so we can see. Because if we're gonna hire a code enforcement person, we should see how much of that is really UNO versus how much of that is zoning, which
Sure.
projects, et cetera. Same thing with the fees and the engineering costs. Like, everything is proven big, and that's not how we're spending, and that's, that's my own point on it. I haven't spent a lot of time on it, but it, it is how it's going to go forward. So if we're spending more on grant applications, like, our budget should reflect that, not just between grant applications and grant projects in general. That's my own point.
Yeah.
Tracking the way we're really using our money.
That's where we can make cutbacks, then. So if we're saying that we don't want to spend that amount on grant applications next year, that's, that's what we need to do here. But for his purposes, for the, for the proposed budget, I would have done it the same way, because at the end of the day, each account is allocated that amount of money, and how council determines how to spend it is another story. So I agree with you there. As far as the tracking, I know I've gone to battle with the tracking of it as well for a couple of years now, and I think we are starting to get better data, but I believe some of that's the new accounting software is gonna help resolve that, correct?
It will help immensely, but it's not fully implemented yet.
Right.
But to your point, this was a mid-year budget adjustment that we made at council's request to these, I believe, three budget categories. So that's why we did what we did, and then spread it evenly among the new subgroups, basically.
All right. So when is this new council?
Well, we initiated the transition October 1st. It's probably going to run over several phases through the end of March.
And so, so then, there's not a lot, like, there's not much wiggle room, then, if any of this?
No. If there was wiggle room, we would have made adjustments before presenting it to you.
So then, I guess, something we haven't discussed in this personnel?
Uh huh. That's the biggest driver of costs. We're a people business.
Does anybody have anything else to add here? Some thoughts on that? So, I have some thoughts. So, we have a finance director, so that's, well, actually, I'll go, I'll go back. So, 3% increase across the board is contractual obligation. Who is not under those obligations? So, like, who's?
Right. It would be the borough manager, the finance director, and the superintendent of public works.
So, my recommendation there is that management, in a time when taxes are being raised eight now, and on next, so does anybody have any thoughts on that?
What's the dollar amount? We're talking of savings.
Oh, excuse me, and the chief of police.
But the chief of police's contract says he gets parity with the officers, correct?
Correct. So does mine. But, yes. But he's considered management. Yes.
So that leaves the public works director and the finance director.
Correct.
No, because his contract says he gets, he gets parity to the, to the chief. He gets $1,000 more than the chief of police. Be, no, it would be whatever the chief gets, and, and so it would be the 3%, I believe, because it would still, he's, he's already paid it $1,000 more, so whatever the chief gets additionally, say it's $100, Scott would get that $100 more as well. I'm not saying that's what it is. I'm just using it as an example.
So we can look at that, and it's still, you save $1,000 more on the budget?
No, because the borough manager already makes $1,000 more. Whatever the chief gets as a, as an increase, because he's contracted to get parity to the officers, which is 3%, I believe, this year. Yes. He would, the chief would get that, that 3%, and in default, Scott would get that 3%. The borough manager, we get that 3% as well. It's a contractual obligation.
It does say that.
Isn't it specified by $1,000 more?
I don't know if it specifies a dollar amount or not.
Okay.
I don't recall.
I'm pretty sure I recall that.
I, I recall that.
Assuming that's what the contract says, then that's what the contract says.
So, assuming, let's assume that, I can answer, so what does everyone think of not having a managed?
How much would that save us?
Well, that depends on who's in the mix at this point. My structure is 2,200, and the rest is 2,200, 4500. 2,000 for the manager, and 2,000 for the chief.
2,200 and 2,300, so 4,500. Okay. I'm not saying I'm a yes on something like that, but that's, I guess, a start.
Yeah, so we can, we can take a look at it with, I mean, it's not known to change that.
No.
It's a start. The finance director, what is the role of the finance director? It doesn't seem like it. Perhaps we don't think that finance director had paid $2,000.
The duties and responsibilities for that position are spelled out in the job description.
So if we eliminate some of that, then go on to some of the other people in the office? How would?
Yeah, you would have to come up with a plan on how you're gonna handle that portfolio. I don't think any of the other department heads or myself are going to agree to take on all of that work.
I believe we'd also probably have to reinstitute the treasurer and assistant treasurer.
Correct.
With their stipend.
Yeah, you'd have to do something. I mean, he works 50, 60 hours a week already.
Now, how about the, the, that we need the finance director to be part-time, or not realize that we have to, I hope we could do that, but I can take a look at the job description. Is that on the table, or?
Not for me.
I'm against that.
That would be not good for the office infrastructure at all. We worked hard to get the office infrastructure to a point where we weren't getting fines and penalties from the government, from the IRS and so forth. And I think changing that and eliminating what we put in as a protection for the taxpayer to not have to pay those additional fees, I think, is a mistake, and it keeps us on track, and it's actually working. I think it's, I think it would be a bad idea to, to just decimate the infrastructure of the office by removing that position.
And not to mention, I think it's a good point of controls that, for a $7 million budget, you don't have just a borough manager doing, dealing with the dollars. You also have, basically, an accountant and a finance director. At $7 million, money can move and go places that you'll never find it again, so.
I think from an audit perspective, you'd take a dump, too, because it kept coming up that there was only one initialing on the, on the deposits that I'm sure we fixed by now. But if you only have one option for somebody to do deposits, from an audit perspective, you're gonna, you're gonna get hit every year.
Plus, keep in mind, we are subjected to five audits a year. I mean, those audits entail quite a bit of work. And I think the past two or three years, we've had the cleanest audits in recent memory.
Yeah, ask a question. The, I'd like to address Mike's question, or his statement regarding the penalties that were being paid. I, I agree that that was somewhat egregious. And, and I'm not here to put blame on anyone, but as, in the past, the blame was put on someone that, that was not responsible for doing that. And you do have some systems down there now that are working well. I agree. But the treasurer, and a question for Mike, what, you said there was only one, one signature on some of the?
If you looked at the audits from the past year, the, there was a recommendation to have multiple initialing on the deposits.
Okay. And we only had one? Was it one person, or only one signature at the time?
It was only one initial. I believe there was, they were doing, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys were doing a double check, but it just wasn't being initialed on the deposit slip.
Uh huh. I believe that's correct.
So, so the signature wasn't there, but it wasn't like it wasn't being overseen?
Correct. And that's the past couple of years. Yes.
Scott, on the finance director, is, does he do most of the tracking and laywork and paperwork on the grants, keeping the grant paperwork straight, and the finances and receipts?
No. He deals, in terms of grants, it would be post-project audit, and also the processing of payments. So if there is payments to be made to either the engineer, contractor, whoever, regarding that project or contract, he would facilitate getting those payments made that are required, and making sure we're getting reimbursed from the grant funding agency.
That was gonna be the next question. Who deals with the grant funding agency to make sure that they have all the proper paperwork and everything that they need?
Dealing with the grant funding agencies is either myself, the finance director, or the borough engineer, or all the above.
And I'll just, I'll make another comment. When it comes to the, his, that specific salary, just like it would for the borough manager, that salary's broken up over multiple funds. This is why I say we have to look at the funds themselves, because if you want to make an impact, you may not even be impacting a fund that needs the increase. So you could do something like that and not even get the benefit you're looking for, because $83,000 sounds like, like a lot of money, but it's, it's a couple of dollars from this account, it's a couple of dollars from that account. So at the end of the day, you're not putting yourself in a position to really avoid the tax increase, as opposed to somebody whose entire salary is in, say, the general fund. You remove a salary like that, when you need four mils of an increase, when only a portion of his salary comes out of the general fund, you're not gonna have the impact to the general fund that you're hoping to. I believe.
Sure, yeah. We've provided the salary allocation breakdown previously. We can provide it again for everybody.
I appreciate that. That was gonna be one of my questions, because there's, there's nowhere in the budget, even, even on the financial that we get every month, it, it doesn't list anything next to administration and salary, or the treasurer. And if, if 10,000 of that is toward, of Mike's salary is for the treasurer, then it should be on the treasurer line. I, I just think that would be a fairly easy fix, as, I know it's only one portion of it, but.
I disagree, because we did away with the treasurer position when we brought on the finance director, so there's no need to budget for a treasurer anymore.
Yeah, we.
It's my understanding, though, that that's part of his, when, when he was appointed, there's a multiple, correct me if I'm wrong, because I probably could be, I'm sure, but what is, what is Mike's actual, what is his title? I don't want to feel like he's not in the room, so, I mean, he can answer, but.
I just realized he is.
Finance director, treasurer, and compliance officer.
Exactly. So a part of his, he's treasurer, part of him is a treasurer.
Right. But where you're looking at treasurer is what was previously a stipend paid to someone who did the job on a part-time basis.
Correct.
This isn't a stipend. This is a salaried full-time employee. So it would be more appropriate for whatever he's being paid, or that position's being paid for their treasury services, to come from a labor line. That's why it is the way it is.
Okay.
Oh, we're used to it.
Yeah.
No, in fact, I'm not recommending any reduction in personnel at this time, nor would I. We've, we've shed, we shed three positions coming into the current budget, one of which was a probationary police officer position that was restored. Two were administration personnel, one was an office associate, and one was in the public works department. So those positions haven't been restored. They were eliminated. We have no intention of backfilling them, and the budget doesn't call for any new heads, but I'm not recommending any personnel reductions in this budget.
Is that current positions, or are we going to build positions?
If it has a dollar amount on the line, it has a head associated with it.
Is there a head there on? Like, for instance, the corporals, it says two corporals. So is that corporal position, do we have to eliminate it, or is it included in these dollars?
We have two corporals.
We have two corporals, and those two positions are funded.
The question is, do we, as a council, have to eliminate that corporate position? Is it included in there and not the budget?
No, no actions really needed.
By approving, the budget approves the Manning table.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, no. I would have had that same question. I know I've gone on about the Manning table plenty.
Yep.
So I do have some questions, like so, the library, so they're only going on point two, some of them, but I see new books in the budget, but a year to date, they've only spent $12,000, and last year they only spent $13,000. What, why did that double down? Buying new books?
I might be able to answer that. I believe that there was just a new, a new order. I think it was in our last bill list. The, in order to receive any state funding, they must, they must purchase at least 12% of the total budget on new books and equipment.
I did not know that.
So.
Yeah, the library has a contractual obligation with the state as part of the funding it receives to operate from the state to spend X amount of money on new materials per year, and they will meet that obligation.
Something at the library?
No.
So it sounds like there's nothing to that.
There isn't.
This is very disheartening.
Well, it has been four years with no adjustment to the budget.
But I will say, as we pointed out, there were adjustments to the spending that allowed us to stay flat for year over year.
Yeah, but you can only do that so often.
I know.
Yeah.
So would we raise the situation?
Yep.
And apply this increase is coming up?
Yes.
When I'm being here, you're telling me I can't.
I'm telling you, you can't find anything, because we have been through this at our level, we have been through this with each department head. If there was something that we could in good conscience say is able to be cut, it would have been done before you saw this document.
So, if I may, so let's talk about the sixteen-month, the sixteen-month budget. Just give a quick overview, because I know it's important, but just so everyone gets to hear it from you.
On paper, you're adopting and we follow a 12-month budget.
Yes.
But in reality, we have to survive fifteen, almost sixteen months on that 12-month budget, because we don't get property taxes coming in until April of the New Year. So we have to cash flow and run the borough for an entire fiscal quarter based on the previous year's budget, also utilizing the TAN fund and the capital reserve fund for cash flow purposes. I mentioned this in the finance committee, but it bears repeating, because some of you may not know this, but this is the first year we have also had to utilize the capital reserve fund in addition to the TAN fund, just to continue the borough's operations through the first fiscal year. That had not been done previously. And we're using the TAN fund and the capital reserve fund earlier each year, and for a longer period of time, it's taking us to replenish it on an annual basis than ever before. So at that pace, this is what's prompting us to come to you with requests for a tax increase.
But this is only for one year, because theoretically, once you get that money sitting there?
It cycles back. It goes back into the kitty, it's our savings for the next year, yes.
Especially the capital reserve.
Not really, this is an ongoing problem, because it's my view, it's been my view since I've been here, I have voiced this to every council since I've been here, is the borough lacks adequate cash savings. We don't have a sufficient rainy day fund. It's dangerous, it's irresponsible, and something needs to be done about it.
So, I know you have mentioned this in the past, it's a similar thing. So the EIT.
Well, I think that gets floated and discussed almost every year, and almost every year it fizzles off into the wind.
Thoughts? No? Yes?
It's on topic. It's on topic, so just let. Do you think the EIT needs to be explored? And a reason why, you were in EIT, you now access everybody's payroll. You don't tax anybody's service, because she's not working, I get taxed, she doesn't, that's not fair. Well, you're going to say that everybody gets taxed fairly, that's a lie, they're not getting taxed fairly. Go ahead, finish. You'll be able to have. That's fine. So everybody gets taxed equally, okay? As compared, so you're now spreading to everybody. We are already paying $270,000 to other municipalities that could come here. People work here, or work in other places, or live here. So if you just do a tax increase, if you just do a real estate increase, you are now affecting just your homeowners. Agree? Okay, so you're affecting a real part, and you're affecting your elderly, who are not bringing any more money in, as compared to if you have a quadplex out there, you have four people living in there, you have four adults, each person's going to be paying your EIT. So it spreads it out. And if there's a political issue, you have to worry about our voting. The people who vote the most are our elderly people. They were there every election at eight o'clock in the morning, so they're going to be able to not have to pay any more taxes this year. And perhaps if we get our financial house in order, someday, maybe we would look at, maybe try to reduce those to homeowners' taxes, because we're bringing in a million dollars, as compared to this eight or nine mils that are being out there, which brings in, how much, Scott? What's eight or nine mils bringing?
Almost half a million dollars.
A million dollars, okay. We spread it out, all your apartment people will now have to contribute towards our power.
That's assuming that they're, that they've changed their address appropriately, and we see a lot of New Jersey plates in those apartments, so I don't know that that's as accurate as I'd like it to be. I agree with you to some extent, I just don't know that it would have the impact that we would want it to have in that, in that area.
What we want to speak of came from the organization that we're collecting the money. Another issue is.
We sent out the latest version earlier in the year, and it's in the Dropbox.
They did that in March, is that correct?
See, George, from last year?
Yeah, for last year, yeah. It's updated to the most current, but I'm trying to yield the floor to the person who's speaking. Sorry.
Best point is, 95% of boroughs in Pennsylvania have EIT. How can we really consider if we're going to be able to survive, and we have no other funds besides real estate taxes? How differently would we want to be on this? This is, all over, you know, little towns spending in $700,000, there's a lot of money coming in that could come in. We would have done this three years ago, like I suggested, we would not be sitting here tonight trying to cut salaries and personnel and things like that. We wouldn't be doing that, we'd be sitting here, we'd be financially feasible, be able to do what we want to do. I don't want to sound selfish, but I guess this may sound selfish, but the way this will affect me, an EIT for me versus an eight mil tax increase, an eight mil tax increase on my house would be about $160, $170. One percent is going to be $1,500. So you're taking $1,500 out of my pocket. I'm not one of those people that pay that EIT. I don't pay that. I work in, I work in Jersey, I work in Aspen, I don't pay the EIT. I think you can pay. That's because if you. Three and a half percent EIT. But if you choose to watch, you don't pay. Right. So if you choose to live silly, you can choose to pay.
And yours will stare.
Yeah, and yours won't come here.
It won't.
You're right. But I'm paying, but I'm just saying, three and a half percent I pay, but you're going to take care of your elderly people. Where you're okay, hit them again on more real estate taxes.
May, go ahead.
So, I have a book in the box, so like, there's a one percent, because if you pass a percent, you do point one percent.
Yeah.
Do we know what those dollars are?
I don't know if that was in that information that we submitted in the box from earlier in the year or not. I'd have to look at it again.
Does that fit in?
Yeah, that information came from Keystone Collections Group, not, we didn't generate it, yeah.
I mean, if you do the math, if we know what one percent is, if you have it, you know, you have access to the box, it tells you what percent.
Yeah, he doesn't have access to your Dropbox, no.
I was just going to open the box.
Does anybody remember?
You can, there's a search feature.
There's a search feature. Yep.
I was just going to.
No, but if you type in EIT, it brought it up.
It brings it right up.
Open mine.
Yep, put in EIT and hit search, and it should bring it up. It's in the, I forget what we called the folder that it's in.
Just gives what others are getting.
There's also, there's also a very extensive chart to tell you who actually has it in, well, I did Pennsylvania, but I'm sure you can just get Bucks County as well.
Yeah, I believe that's it. It totals it at the bottom, what the, that's just from people who already live here that are already paying it. Right, that's the people who already live here and are already paying the EIT.
Is anybody interested in? Not too much, that's a research, I'm not saying we have to agree to that.
Definitely did every option.
Anybody interested in, like, looking at, like, giving up your EIT?
Are we thinking about a hybrid of a tax increase? Like, we just do, like, can you do a tax increase and an EIT? I'm asking, because I don't know.
Yeah, you could.
You actually would have to, yeah.
It's going to take a while, if this council decides to put in EIT, it's not going to be something that's ready for January.
That's why we have a chat, because I have to add, sometimes we get feel for what people are thinking. Do you have it off the table?
It's not, it's not on my table, for sure.
I'm up in here, I'll consider it, but.
We have to do something, so, I mean, I'd like to address, you know, Scott's point, I get it that an eight, an eight mil increase is a lot cheaper than giving up a large portion of your paycheck, I get that. And it's not just the elderly, and I do understand the chief's point, but you have, you know, you have families, families of four that are trying to struggle on 50 grand a year between the two of them, and they're going to have a large chunk of, you know, their monies taken. And so, I mean, I'm not crazy about it, I have to pay, I mean, and I'm willing to pay. Many people are willing to pay. Of course, you always want to pay less, so, you know, the lesser of two evils, but I don't think we have, I don't think that we are in a position to be able to say that we're not going to do something, that we're not going to somehow raise these eight mils somehow, whether it's in a hybrid form or just, you know, just EIT.
Well, sure, that was the excuse. It is. So at $50,000, point oh one percent increase is only $50. Now, I don't know what that amounts to, in the big picture, is that like $100,000 extra dollars to us, et cetera, but I'm just saying that we could play around and not do a one percent, which would be $500, which is a lot of money.
Well, even if you did a one percent, you may not get all of that, because the school district, I believe, has the option to.
They're going to, because whatever, under Act One, whatever they, whatever they bring in through in all kinds of tax, other than real estate, capital, or the real estate.
So it's a disadvantage to them.
Available in January. That's true, you would immediately see $275,000, that's just a bunch of money, that's what you're being paid on your account, so it's up to you, including just the changes. The rest of it, as they can, we can quote up.
Assuming that we, that we get the maximum that we're asking, that we're able to ask, right? So, under her plan of taking point oh one percent.
That's not my plan.
Well, plan, it's a discussion, whatever it is, under, under that philosophy, you'll call it, you wouldn't get the $275,000 anyway, right? You'd get a small portion of that, because, yeah. But your point's taken, my point was only that if that's how we're covering it, we're not going to be able to fully cover it. But to your point, yeah, we would get some, it would just take a while for it to come, come full circle.
You don't get your real estate tax till April.
Yeah, but it could be a year, from what I recall, before you start seeing the full implementation of it. I believe that's, I remember.
It can take that long to fully seed the program, but the people who are already paying it would certainly be the ones that you would collect from first, yeah.
So technically, we'd probably see the same amount of money by the time, and real estate taxes, or taxes for S and D, during the rest of the year, that's logical.
I can't speak to that.
I don't know. Based on what Keystone had told us, I believe the answer was it could take a full year, a full cycle before you get the full impact from it. That's, that was my understanding. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know, I'm taking their word for it.
Well, if that is the case, I don't see us being in any better position next year. Then I would think that if we think this is going to take a year to be implemented, we should move sooner than later.
Yeah, I think if it's something council's seriously considering, it's worth flushing out.
Can we compete?
Yeah, we can get better data on it.
If we have wishlist items, then, I have one. I would like to see what the difference would be if we carved out that 16-month budget and made it a 14-month budget this year, added to what we would expect the increases to be in 2022, and another, and the remainder of that 16 months, to see what it would look like over two years in increases, if we kept up with the changes and phased the increase in taxes. You understand where I'm going?
Before he answers the other question.
I think doing it all in one year is asking too much, that's what I'm saying. So let's break it up, let's look at it over two years, and see if we could do a 14-month budget this year, and a 16-month budget the following year.
Okay, but the problem is, you have to adopt a 12-month budget by December 31st.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
But isn't the 16-month budget just somewhat, I know financially it's not, but it's a hypothetical.
Somewhat theoretical, yes.
This is the 16-month budget, correct?
No, I don't think so.
No, this is a 12-month budget on paper that we have to rely on to survive for 15 to 16 months.
So, but, okay, so then when I asked, at the, okay, all right, so then I didn't get the answer, I was, to the question I was giving at the. You, you understand where I'm going?
Before he answers the other question.
I, I think doing it all in one year is asking too much. That's what, that's what I'm saying. So let's break it up, let's look at it over two years and, and see if we could do four, a 14-month budget this year and a 16-month budget the following year.
Okay, but the problem is you have to adopt a 12-month budget by December 31st.
I understand.
Okay, alright.
But isn't the 16-month budget just somewhat, I know financially it's not, but it's a hypothetical.
Somewhat theoretical, yes.
This is the 16-month budget, correct?
No, I don't think so.
No, this is a 12, this is a 12-month budget on paper that we have to rely on to survive for 15 to 16 months.
So, but, okay, so then when I asked at the, at the, okay. Alright, so then I didn't get the answer, I was, the, to the question I was giving at the, um, at the Finance Committee meeting. I asked a question and you gave me a different answer then. Maybe you just, maybe I just wasn't clear on the question. Okay, never mind then. Never mind then. So you're saying that this doesn't include any of the additional that you're gonna need to get through next year?
No.
No, we've never.
No, I don't think so.
We've never, but that was my understanding from our conversation was that some of this included what you're gonna need to carry through until the, until the next time you get taxation in 2022.
Right, for cash flow purposes.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So that's in here, correct?
Well, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about budget and you're talking about cash flow.
Yes.
They're two different issues.
Yes.
Okay.
But this budget i- is set up to be able to ma- manage what we, what we currently have and get us through until the 2022 taxes get in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so.
You mean.
2022 even, so we, we have to, for 2021, we've got a budget in here. We've also got additional, uh, you, you've built in, stop me where I'm wrong.
I'm trying to follow you.
Okay, you've built into this budget the ability to get through 2021, right?
Yes.
And get to the 2022 tax.
Yes, because we anticipate expenses in the first quarter of.
Correct.
Correct.
So then my question.
Those expenses are not itemized and included in this budget, because it's a separation between budget and cash flow. Do you understand?
So. So in your revenue budget, you're not showing any of that additional cash?
What additional cash?
That you're gonna need to carry through for cash flow?
No.
Okay. So then how, how are you proposing to do that with this budget?
Because your TAN fund and your CAP reserve fund are part of this budget.
And they're part of every budget?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so now I get what you're saying. It's not what I thought you were saying before, but, alright, that's.
I apologize for any confusion.
Uh, that's, it was probably on me, I probably wasn't asking my question clearly. Okay, I get it now.
I'm just gonna clarify it for my clarification.
Go ahead.
The, this is, this budget is for 12 months of operations.
Correct, 2021.
2021.
12 months.
Correct. And then, um, the anticipation, which actually ends up being, the tax anticipation is what we use, along with the capital improvement, which we didn't use in past years. But that's how you're gonna fill in your so-called other three to four months.
Correct, and we would be, right, we would reduce our dependency on it slightly so that it can sustain us for the first quarter of 2022, until April, when property taxes come in. Yeah.
I mean, that's how I understood it, but I wanted to make sure.
And this is not new. This is the way the borough's budget has always been done, and this is not new to Morrisville. It's, everybody around us has the same issues, so. Right, and in fact, in a way, you're lucky that you have the TAN fund because if you didn't, we'd be going for a tax anticipation note, which is a financing instrument from a bank, which we probably would not be able to get because we're carrying nearly a million dollars in debt already, so. It was close, but we got them replenished, I think it was in July, when we got both fully replenished. So, once property taxes came in, plus the other fortunate thing here is like 98% of the people that pay the property taxes here do so and take advantage of the discount period. So they all pay early, myself included, to get the discount. So fortune, you know, so it's kind of front-loaded because technically you have until the end of the calendar year to pay, so. We will, yes.
So Scott, how much did we actually use from the Capital Reserve Fund? Because if I remember correctly, you pulled about $70,000 from Capital Reserves, but that was before you knew what we were gonna need.
Actually, we pulled all of the TAN fund and we pull, well, all but maybe seven to $10,000, and we pulled almost all of the CAP reserve fund, except, what did we leave in it, about? What was it?
Eight and a ten and a six, five and a cap.
So, yeah, we left $5,000 in Capital Reserve, so I mean, we, we took them down to near zero.
But how much did we, did we actually use it? Or was that just because, I know at the time I had spoke to you, when I saw it come out of Capital Reserve, you were worried about the effects of the pandemic and COVID-19 on our finances, which turned out to be.
Minimal.
In our favor, minimal.
Yes, and actually, yes, there was some communication with council at that time as well because we were not sure how that was going to affect tax collections or the collection of bad debt through porting off, so.
So I guess what I'm saying is when you pulled out the TAN fund and the capital expenses, how close to zero did we get before the tax revenue started going in?
Yeah, do you remember off the top of your head? Because I don't. I mean, we could go back and look, but it, it was too close for comfort, I'll, I'll tell you that, but I can't tell you an exact number off the top of my head.
Okay, and I have another question on that too. With, with the funds here, you have proposed with your increases, how come we don't list the TAN fund and propose increasing that if that's what you really want to get after is increasing the amount we have from contingency or tax anticipation note?
I'd be happy to increase the TAN fund. Quite frankly, I think the TAN fund should be in the neighborhood of a million dollars, and we're barely at, what, 400,000, just shy of 400,000?
Three eighty.
Yeah.
I would be, I would be fine with that, please, because 300's been that for probably, I don't know, 20 years.
Yeah, ever since I was at the county and we bought the annex from the borough, so.
So, um, and taxes.
Yes.
Yes.
No, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So let me ask you about personnel issues. Is there anyone in the borough that is working overtime or getting comp time, hours?
Everyone in the borough at one time or another works overtime. Comp time, I could not speak to off the top of my, well, actually, some AFSMI employees get comp time in lieu of overtime. We, we would not be able to get through a year without having overtime for employees. Virtually every department needs to utilize overtime. We don't have a deep bench of personnel here, so it, yeah.
Yeah, but corporate America doesn't come out and ply your streets or respond to emergencies.
Right.
Yeah. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but I understand where you're coming from, yeah. Uh, we always try to mitigate the need for overtime, but it's, it's not possible to eliminate it entirely. Comp time, um. Yeah, uh, do any of your people get comp time? You guys don't get comp time, you just do overtime, right?
Is anyone utilizing Kellytime at this point?
Oh, yes, they use Kellytime regularly. It's contractual.
Okay, I was just curious.
We should talk about the budgeting. So when you're here on, on Cal, so you're getting comp time? So that's people, so when you're using it, that's people off the streets because you're not working chief during the day.
On the street?
Yes.
I believe the office doesn't find anyone. That's most work in the streets.
So should we, um, talk about not having a chief's report and having the mayor do the chief's reports?
Sorry.
Mixing drinks down there?
Exactly.
It's really, it's really not an additional expense if he's using comp time. It means if he's working three hours now, he'll just take it off at, at a different day, those three hours, and it still ends up the same amount of money to the taxpayer. That I, that I get.
Sure.
Alright, so going, pay attention Ted. So, so looking at these, um, information here, if places peddlers.
What, could you tell, I'm sorry, could you tell me what page so we can, I can follow?
Seven.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, so, so I'm just looking at like extra part-time, year-to-date 64,000, last year 50,000, and then we have a budget of 122,000. That seems like a big leap. I don't know how these numbers might have, how you figured out the 2021. Don't I? For the next two part-time police, so, so last year we made 50,000, now 50,000. This year we're budgeted 109 and now we're 122 next year. Like that seems like a couple, that's double what we did last year.
Yeah, actually, we had reduced that line item last year to use it somewhere else within the police budget, and we're right, we're proposing to put it back where it was at the 122. That's where it's always been.
And Nancy.
But to, to Micah's point, I'm sorry Nancy, before I let go of the floor for a sec, most of the increase to the police budget is of course heads, contractual obligations, yeah.
I was just gonna say, the 64,000 list, that's, that's only, we still have another quarter to go, so, I don't know how much more will be used of the. Correct. I mean, I don't, we might not get all the way up there, and maybe we'll get over there, I don't know.
Great, that's what I'm saying, that 109 just to 122, that's. Like the police officer's fourth.
I have six, I have page six on mine, I don't know why.
So the police officer's fourth time, same thing, last year it was four, five, six, seven, and then last. The last thing I want to do. Does anyone have any comments, questions, suggestions?
If, if I could, can I jump to page two of 21? Page two and three of 21, revenues. The four, the 4.872 million. Mr. Mitchell. Is that, how, is, that's not including the four, the four mil increase in the general fund, correct?
No.
Okay.
This is current levels.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
This includes the same $650,000 from the MMA rate, there's no increase?
It includes the same 650 from the MMA, although we're projecting a slight overage to that fund.
Let me, let me go back to my question though, Scott, because you got it under the column of estimated 2021. So the 4.8 is the estimated for next year, correct?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Page, uh, three of 21, the bottom of page three of 21, total revenues.
Yep, gotcha.
Alright, that includes the increase from trash, and only, it leaves, leaves the revenue from real estate taxes actually six, 6,000 lower.
Yes.
But you're proposing to increase the taxes?
Correct.
So why wouldn't that four mil show in there?
Because if you look at the top sheet and tab two.
Yep, got it right here.
The numbers that are in gray, that are not council-approved, like under the general fund where it says millage rate, you have 30 mils.
Okay, so you just left it at what's already approved from the.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I was asking, okay, thank you.
Yep, although you are correct that the sanitation budget number is correct based on the new contract.
Okay, that's what was thrown at me, thank you.
You know, when we got the second draft, um, you had the possible GPS system in there and also the movie nights?
Yes.
Obviously, the GPS, if we're not doing that, then, I mean, that comes out, but the movie nights is still in there.
It is.
I know it's very, again, it's trivial, but is, do we have, do we have the money for that expense?
It's like $8,000, and the GPS is in there, as you mentioned. It'll be up to council whether you wish to reconsider that issue or not, or we can remove it.
Okay, I agree.
So for me, if we use it, the task.
Are we gonna have, go have another tie here tonight? No, I, I just, I don't, especially after the, the mayor's explanation that there's three different locations now that, that can be tracked, as well as track, tracking from the county.
No, it's not just the police officers, it's all their vehicles.
Right, okay. Which would be the, the one that Billy drives, and John.
Well, actually, it would be all of your public works vehicles, not just those two, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you leave it in as a cushion, I think there's probably 10 other places Scott could use it more as a cushion.
Agreed.
Take that out. So, so in terms of the budget, we have the salary increases for management and.
Sure.
That's not a lot of money.
Honestly, I wouldn't take out the salary increases, to be honest with you. You're talking about $4,500, it's, I mean, it's not even a tenth of a, of a mil. It's, it's really, and, and what you're gonna do is you're gonna take the people that, that are, that we count on the most and completely disengage them. Fair, no, I mean, I, I'd like to see it too, absolutely.
It's three. It'd be three people.
Before we hear your radical idea, I have a, just a quick question back on the, the expenses. The, the state aid pension? It's, we have it at 90 grand.
Yes.
Last year, I think we paid 103,000.
Correct.
So, are, are we good with the 90?
We are.
We are?
Yeah, the, the 90 is. Yeah. The, the 90 is what we budget. We, last year and this year, we've gotten more, and what comes in from the state, of course, goes out to PMRS, so it's an exchange, and we then supplement whatever the difference is.
Okay.
Yeah.
What it is, I guess what budget is? So, we had, and I know that the college didn't come and speak to us as a COVID type of touch-up.
Uh, yeah.
As I was looking at the study, and one of the things that they had said in there was detectives. One of my ideas is to create a detective position there. And that would cost us, in that, take work away from patrolmen without control, and perhaps save some of beyond the overtime and the other expenses that comes out of that, this all this. But if it were more pressure, I think it would add a lot to the county, since it was something that was represented to us, and that's something we should consider.
Are you...
An operation, an operational question, I guess is for the chief. If you had, say we have a detective, and say, three of our officers have, you know, three cases, are the officers then no longer involved in those cases? I mean, isn't there gonna be a mix? Like, how does that work?
What would you have, those, look at this job, they get assigned certain ones to do detective, or to investigate rather than detective, or make that a civil service position, which is as a... More than our position. I'm not gonna say, you wanna make that a civil service. My job would be investigator. So, not solved job, he would get the, he or she would get the unsolved jobs.
Okay.
How many unsolved jobs do you think we have right now? But if you're, there's enough there that this will actually help out?
Absolutely. I'd love to have him be investigator. I just don't know whether I would afford one, because I, right now, we don't have that much. Right now, I have one person on the limit. In fact, we'll have another person, but then you have to, officer, do you wanna do investigator? To be something that is, I guess, it's not...
Are we paying overtime because our officers have to spend time doing that? Or do they just not, they don't even get a chance to do it because they're patrolling?
They're not, the officers are, they have enough time sufficiently to, today, to locate the jobs, and I know, or serious jobs, like, or, or serious jobs, they carry one. And some jobs, right from the get-go, there's no sustainability for them. They're not looking at anything except urgency, presenting, or counter, or anything like that, but then you gotta, but...
So, for my own clarification, what the, what the suggestion would be, would be, and stop me if I'm wrong, chief, would be escalating an existing employee to that position, make it almost, I think what you were talking about was making it a promotion. Oh, okay, so this would be making it a position, but, but filling it internally, no? And then bringing somebody else in to backfill the patrolman position. So, are you aware what that would cost us if we were to do that, in just the escalating cost of the new officer, not to mention the increase that you would have to pay to promote somebody into that position?
Here, the, when you backfill, I first said, you have an officer out, and that officer got interested in it, then you're not backfilling it. You said it by this or the, or the, the traffic, correct?
I have one officer right now, one corporal who is, one, two, right, right. So, it gets better, they'll go back out on the street. At that point, I have one extra officer, which is your truck officer, and decide to put him back to a truck, or, say, do a patrol, and I take another person off, and it would make that person investigator.
Or, we, we create a sergeant slash detective position, through civil service, and whatever, gets it, gets it. You're still, so we're gonna keep the same amount of people, just shifting around.
I don't think that's what he was...
I don't think that's what, I don't think you two are on the same page here.
No.
As you said, once you're corporal, then I, you're gonna have an extra officer. So, that, let's just, I'm saying, say that extra officer, you're still on the same, same level here.
Okay, well, I didn't say anything about promoting to a sergeant.
No, that was my question. I think you're confusing.
You wanna make that an investigator, that way, you can go short on the street, and put back in the uniform, and make it on the street, make it detective, plain clothes, and people stop with that as detective, plain clothes.
Once, once, once an officer, plain clothes, you can't put him back in the uniform on the street?
Basically, that doesn't allow it. You might just make a position, not a contractual position.
What if you call it acting? Does that, is it slow, is that better?
Well, I, I think to make it investigator, it would make that, when you go, that's a, that way, if you're in, it's a, Bob, Tom, Joe, whatever.
Could that be written in the job description, and say, you, you will go on the street?
You're assigned.
Municipals, you are, detectives have an actual uniform, and they have to have it, go out in, and, and municipalities out here the same way, too. Um, I'd love to have it, if we can afford it, it makes sure continually have two officers on the street. And if you're not going to do truck enforcement again, so you get more bodies, you have to get up to 15, 16, 17 officers, investigator. Now, you're, you're pretty well available, and, and...
I have a quick question regarding, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you believed that when he said he had someone out, that that would actually almost be like an extra person when he came back, but my understanding is the person that would be out has you down a person? No?
I have enough people on the street.
Right. But what about this, the person that's out, that's what my question is. You said someone's out right now? Limited duty. Oh, that's what I meant by out, I'm sorry. Okay.
Justin or Beau Luna.
Okay.
Bo were probably back to trucks, in the direction of having an investigator, and the investigator can swap people around, and some people on the street.
Okay, thank you. With no traffic.
Truck, truck guys down there, going that direction. Investigator, it could be, it could happen right down, where you leave that to the chief.
I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm for getting rid of the truck enforcement, though. Really don't, but...
That's why I started to, it sweeps up, altar map, official three, four, final officers. Really, your department up to where you want to be.
Well, we don't have that kind of money. Not that I'm trying to add to the chief's budget, but I had another question with regards to, we only have, we're only, we're only planning, well, we budget $5,000 for, for solicitors, for the police, and for their legal matters, and I would just like it to be a truer number. I mean, some of that's coming out of the other solicitation, solicitors, right? Because a lot of, there's a lot of cross-solicitation going on.
Yeah, well, we're not budgeting true numbers in a lot of categories because we can't afford it. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to balance the budget.
And you really, it's a guessing game to, to what that's gonna be.
Yeah, it depends on the year. We can't predict what legal actions may come, what personnel actions may come, yeah.
It's the best guess, I get it, but it just seems, and then, since the chief's here, I'm gonna ask him, what is the technology, the 15,000 technology line, technology? I'm just asking, if, do you have a, something in mind, or?
Going to continue upgrading our computers, and the police department, the cameras all around town always get upgraded, cameras up, everything, everything we brought around technology.
Okay.
Well, thankfully, the cameras on top, they're, they're pretty good. They'd be better?
Absolutely, and more. There's a lot of spots that are gone down here, but they've been pretty good.
Now, they're, they're, they're all used for piecing together, like, hey, so I'm actually seeing one, because you gotta, we'll probably get a little lucky if somebody tells something we're on.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not sitting here 100% of the time, right? But they are, in fact, all the officers have access to all the cameras, and anytime they want to look in, they're able to look at, you know, something happens at 12 o'clock, or 12:30, they're looking back right away, 12:30.
And all those cameras that are installed, they can all see that in their cars, in that road, right? Can I have your look at it?
Yes.
I've also been talking to, about motor carrier services. So, maybe we should leave that $10,000 in the budget, because they thought that they could come and help us out to be motor carriers for a very minimal dollar amount. I, I don't have any details or any costs yet, because I just started the cost figures, about what it would be for us to have that, but I, I think it's worth it, the detective slash investigator level, that's important for us. So, can I just work with you to figure that out in the budget, and we'll see what that looks like, and if everybody agrees, or doesn't agree, take it out, put it in?
Just know that 100% of that cost goes in your general fund. You can't break it up over other, other funds, so you'd be, you'd be talking about pushing at least another mil into that, into that increase.
I get that.
Okay.
I mean, is everyone okay to do that? I don't, I'm not, I don't wanna overstep bounds, but I want to see.
I personally wouldn't, I, I don't think it's the right time to do something like that when we're looking at this much of an increase. It is.
I'd entertain it, but what Mike said, I mean, Scott's already pushing for 34 mils, which he's gotta go to court for. One more mil is the most you can go for.
And where you go from there.
And after that, then you're forced to either cut or do the EIT. You either really back yourself into a corner.
Plus, there's no guarantee the court will grant us what we're asking for.
I don't know, they were pretty lenient in past years when we went up there.
I've never known them to say no in many years past. I don't know. Things could be a little more stringent now, I'm not sure.
So, I'll come chat with you, maybe?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, if you have a number, you, numbers, you can just email them to me.
I, I have a question for...
Up to you, whatever's easier.
Chief, like, what, what is the, the salary range for this? Oh, it is the same?
Yeah, you don't need to change that salary for that.
Oh, okay.
That's why I say you make it an investigator, compared to a detective.
They have them as sergeant, detective, so why couldn't we do something like, I am sorry, I just bothered you. I heard that they had other police departments, and they had sergeants, private detectives. Why couldn't we do something like that?
Well, well, I would have done as a sergeant slash detective, supervisor of detectives. They also have six other detectives.
Yeah.
If you're a supervisor of detectives, you have to have detectives to supervise.
Oh, supervisor of all?
That's more money.
20%. Then you have to make that a civil service line, and you have to test to do that, and you get, that's a more disadvantageous civil service. You get it, compared to making, grabbing as an investigator, as a temporary squad. No, sergeant detective, either make it detective, or make it investigator. You get a lot of work, you have to go back to your internal contract, I don't know whether you can actually do that.
It would have to be negotiated.
One last question, I believe. I hope it's my last for, I'm sure you hope too. We have two corporals. Is there, and maybe I missed it, is there thoughts of, of making another corporal? All right, I just wanted to know. Okay. I, I just didn't know where we stood, because I know that there was, you know, when we, when we had the three, the need seemed to be that you wanted to make sure that you always had a corporal available, you know, different shifts and stuff, and it's a good number, so.
You're still in...
Yeah. Correct, so, okay.
I'm competing, I'm not killing, I have to job back.
Okay, so we have to wait. Good point, I forgot.
I would say, you can get rid of...
Yeah. Okay.
It's up to the, the time, and where they, they made. Next week, tomorrow, next week, there's outbreak up there, and all, I think you can't do it. As this virus starts to get up there, I got a feeling, you're not gonna be able to follow, it's not good.
Sure.
Talking about, talking about, some people in the room. I, I understand it's a large increase, but it's $100 to, 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 to market.
So, the bottom line is, regarding our, this increase, is we're gonna wait to see numbers about EIT, is... With the, with the current list we have, because we, we don't know who the unknowns are, right?
The analysis he has.
And that could be for a report?
Correct. So, let me look in the, I don't know, depending what numbers are in there.
No.
So, I, I get that this isn't as easy as, I don't know, installing a ceiling fan. This is, this is a little more complex and difficult than that, but I gotta, I gotta ask for, and if everybody else disagrees, that's fine, I've gotta ask for a copy of a, of a, of a proposed budget that doesn't have any... I've gotta ask for a copy of, of a, of a, of a proposed budget that doesn't have anything that's, that takes out anything that's elastic. So we have plans to, you know, move forward with parks, we have plans to do all these other things internally. I would like to see what the budget would look like with all of that elasticity stripped out. I, I'm not saying that that's where we go, but if I could see what that plan would look like, then we could say, okay, if we are gonna increase, where does that money go right now? I don't feel like that, I, I feel like we're, we're proposing an 8% increase, and I don't see any benefit to the taxpayer for increasing their, their, their taxes from a service perspective.
Okay, it's not 8%, it's eight mills.
I'm sorry, eight, eight mills is what I meant.
About 6.5%.
My mistake, but-
And if you minus out the GPS, and you minus out the concerts in the park, there's your elasticity.
But there's also updates, and, and there's upgrades to facilities and stuff like that in there. Like, listen, maintenance, maintenance is a thing, right? And I know we have to do some of it, but how much, how much can we afford to do as opposed to what's in this budget?
Well, we're already doing the minimum possible. I don't know that we can really do less. I mean, don't get me started on just the roof of this building alone, and what's been going on with it lately. If you can find elasticity, I'm happy to talk to you about it, but-
You know I will, though, right?
I know you will. I have no doubt.
All right, so I'll get together with you. That's all grants.
Yep. Not really. We can stop street paving, but that's liquid fuels money, except what little bit comes from the streets fund.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I just asked, and he's saying, no, I'll go through it with him, and I'll see if I can find anything. Yeah, that's what we do, yeah. You gotta spend that on streets anyway.
I, I think we should be able to cut back something in the, in our engineering department, the engineer services. I, I do, I just think that too oftentimes, I know a lot of them, a lot of it is grants, but grants sometimes need to be matched. In fact, I did have a quick question, which is not really, well, it's not really on the budget, but the other night when we passed those two, the one, the, the traffic signal, and also the possibly sidewalks. If you looked, there, there's a, a match that, you know, $189,000, I think it is, of our match to be able to do that. Now, I know that they always try to find another one to, you know, look for another match, to the match, to the match.
Yes, but just so you're aware, that program, the, where the grant match is waived. For both, for both of those.
Which one?
Absolutely.
We have to keep, we have to look. We, we get the final decision on what we're going to add. What we're gonna approve and not, that would be the time to cut.
I'm, I'm talking about the spending, I'm not really talking about the looking, but, I mean-
I'm hoping it's not going out, the engineering costs that are actual, you know, direct.
I'm, I'm hoping that gets broken down.
And know what, why have some other fund, you know, like, like from a grant, from a solicitor, and they- How close are we to being able to?
To break things down a little bit more.
Mm-hmm, some of that, how-
The problem is, when we can only manage to reduce whatever it is for the people who see that as our engineering costs to the borough, it's not, it's not a, you know, what, what actually happens. Engineering. Speaking of grants, we have, I mean, we have Gilmore with all the, there's basically a couple of grants. Do we have any, are there any other grants out there? There's gotta be grants out there that are, that Gilmore is not gonna do, like. Any grants out there that our department, you got, like, your guy or?
They just brought in the cops grant not that long ago.
My budget, 90% personnel. And two or three years, and say, okay, my camera's gonna die, I have to go for a competitive. Are you planning ahead two or three years, Greg, or not? Is it planned ahead two or three years? We're talking about grants, we said we would have to plan ahead. Are we, is there any planning two or three years ahead?
No, there isn't.
I, I think if we had planning two or three years, it wouldn't be where we are.
Yeah, we, we struggle to plan next year. We're not looking at two or three years away. That's just not plausible right now.
Grants, these grants, the ones that we get, all of that, we can roll for the vest. We can roll for the vest this year. And I go back to that, you're bad shape, can you give us the other 50%? It's up to that. You get a better grant from here right now, maybe down from now, I don't need them a year from now. So I would have had, if I did that, I would have hired a person to do the grant. Why wouldn't you do the grant? Because I'm going up against professionals like, um, Georgetown hires a grant writer, and he gets his grants every time, but he's gotta put out $25,000. He'll do that.
Millennium, yeah.
So it's, you know, I'm not a grant writer, I do the best I can. But you're in a competitive business when it comes to that. Best person gets the money, even though Georgetown doesn't need it. Whereas they get all the money from casinos.
And Sesame Place.
Sesame Place.
And EIT.
So I would throw it back to you, in our community, why don't we get money from casinos? Why does it stop the laws? What's the state law?
No, no, we've, we've applied, and they said, no, we are not, can, yeah.
Leaders. Those guys need to change that law, so it comes out to here.
They changed, it used to be just surrounding, and then they made, they changed the legislature. I just had a conversation with them.
And they went to the next community cell. It's time to go to the next community cell.
The only time they can increase that or change that is if there's something, some decrease in the area.
If they change the law, 36% of all the customers-
But they can't just come borrow, so if something has to happen, the gaming commission would have to open up the legislature again.
You can never change the law. According to the person down there who wants to lead it that way, because if you look, that voting booth is all about where that line is. It only affects one state senator. So I can't believe the rest of the state senators can jump in this game. They change that, 36% of New Jersey, of the people who go to casinos.
Come over our bridges.
And lower our bridges. We're affected by that. If our senators step up, we should be able to get some money.
Excuse me. And Humerville, Humerville gets money.
Copper Street, 9% of the time. Because they're connected to the next town over, but they need to bring it out for them.
And Bristol, Bristol got money. They got $225,000 five years ago. It just, and, and they're not even contingents, contingent, contingent.
Borough or township?
The borough.
Borough.
Yes.
They both get, the borough and the township.
And we, I don't know if they applied in the last couple of years, but in prior years, yes, we were right, because it comes out in June, we write a letter.
I don't know if I can, five years. Imagine if we could do that. That's why I say we need to speak to our state senator, to be able to move that grid around.
Well-
It makes sense, when I spoke to the state, the state senator from down there, he was very amazed that I had those numbers. First off, we left out, that's what you need.
Have you already talked to Steve? And he said that the legislature cannot be opened up until the gaming commission does something to change the constitution. And if that doesn't, then they would, they would start working on the legislature.
Gaming commissions, we're full commission.
So until the state senator, the mayor, they can't change the legislature. I just had a conversation.
If I've had the conversation, too, where I can think about it, they change the laws all the time.
When they change the-
Okay, well, they change, they change.
They should have been just like, why?
They approve the gaming commission, so they can change the rules if they want. Say they set the law, leave the casinos up until 5:00, okay, then there's, there's rules they can change. All the rules are changeable, but if they want to change them, that's the, so there's a big money plot down there. We're gonna ask Keystone to-
EIT.
What, the number is important.
I think the way you should do it is, well, I don't know, like, we can do our own math, but like, if we could get 1% and what dollar that is, 20%, 2.2%, half percent, you know, like-
There's no way, there's no way to estimate. There's no way, anything they, whoever's not currently paying the EIT.
No, because they, they have no idea who's W2, who isn't.
But they could tell us the percentage of, so we have 900 residents, they could tell us the percentage of these residents.
They may, we will ask them.
I mean, you've got, you've got, figure 22% is, 22%, 25% are seniors. So 50% are, so you're talking about 5,000 people that are, are actively employed, and we know what percentage. I get it, some people may not be working, that should be working, but you know, so you get what I'm saying.
Yep, and we'll see what their capabilities are.
So using the, the one that we referenced just in this meeting, the one that was resurfaced to us, what was it, 275,000? I, I shut it down, so I don't know.
That's what they currently-
That's what they currently pay, and that's only the people that we know. Right.
I, yes, I believe the chart that was made available to you is people who live in the borough, who are already paying the EIT to another jurisdiction.
Right, but, so-
And the, the percentage in those jurisdictions is probably varies. This is the dollar amount, what was on that report, based on what they're already collecting.
Because every town has a different-
This is all salaries.
Yeah, we'll see if they can drill down on it deeply, I'm not sure.
And if you're interested, you-
Yes, but my point is, this is all salaries.
You, you, and you can actually see the surrounding, I mean, you can just, it's a simple Google search, it came right up. EIT's in Bucks County, and it'll tell you-
Is that what it was, come down to, what was the amount, the million, average million?
For property owner, yes, it's about that amount, yes.
Scott, if I, if I could, the wage data sheet, if I could draw your attention to that for a second. Total increase for, for wages, this is all wages, some of this would be broken up into other, other accounts, is $43,118. That's contractual.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The wage data sheet, and this is where we, where we say that we have our contractual obligations, right? I mean, we have other contractual obligations, obviously, in, in there as well.
This shows salaries only.
Right, so $43,118 is your total increase for all salaries borough-wide, correct?
Correct.
All right. Then, then I, I gotta stand behind my belief that there's stuff we can strip out. Because I get that we're gonna have increases all over the place. But if, but if the salary increases are less than 10% of our overall increase, there's other things we're not, we're not considering that, that we need to really take a look at and make, make an honest decisions, whether or not we need to do it or not. Because we're talking about our contractual salary increases being less than 10% of our overall increase that we're, that we're proposing.
Right, and you have health insurance and your other insurances.
I get that, and say, health insurance is, is increases on its own by 10%, right? You're gonna have some increases, but if the overall salaries are only, are less than 10% of your total increase, there's something else that, that I'm, I'm not getting. As to where, where the, where the expenses that we, that we're talking about have no elasticity, because that's where your lack of elasticity is gonna be, is in your payroll. Because you need, you need this manpower, you're telling us, I, I believe and agree with that at this point, because we've already made those cutbacks. So I, I do, and, and this isn't gonna be the meeting for it, because I wanna, I wanna get in depth with you in, in some areas, and we can come back and, and talk about it at the next meeting. But I really believe there's some, there's some areas that we need to look at very closely for this year, and, and see what we can do about pushing them off for this year. Because I, I think the increase that we're proposing here is just, it's, it's, it's absorbited. And I get, I, I get the, the argument that the school does it, and nobody, nobody dies, I get all that, but I'm just, I'm not personally comfortable with it.
Okay.
Mike, what did, have you seen, like, if you've gone over it line by line, have, what have you seen that you think we could take out?
Well, that's the thing, there's, there's increases, I can go line by line, but I'm not gonna sit here for four hours going-
Maybe not as a group, but I'm just wondering, you must have gone over it yourself.
I have, I have, and there are, there are increases, but I don't know if they're, if they're increases that are needed or not. That's what I need to sit down and, and try to figure out, and just get, wrap my head around it, is really what, what I'm saying. Because I can't wrap my head around this right now. And in the past, I have sat down with Scott, and he's, he's been able to clarify the stuff for me. So if, if I can wrap my head around it, I'll feel different about it. But for, for my vote, I need, I need more information, because I just can't wrap my head around how, you know, the whole conversation is always, and we hear it from, from borough, we hear it from the school, that, you know, salaries, we, we have contractual obligations for salaries, and that equates the $43,000 of the nearly $500,000 we're talking about. I'm just not comfortable with that. If that's the case, that's fine, and I get it, insurance goes up, I get all that stuff, but I need to get a better understanding and, and a, a more solid belief that the things in here are absolutely something we have to have, as opposed to-
Well, I think some of it also falls on the revenues. You can see a lot of revenue decreases.
There are some.
And, and, you know, that, that's at least a mill on a, a number of, of the decreases, so.
Yeah, and while we're on the subject of revenue, if I can add that you're gonna continue to see declining collections-
Yes.
For prior bad debt.
And I think you're a little high this year for that.
We're, we are. And you're also going to see cable franchise fees from both providers decline over the years, because upcoming generations are simply not using that technology anymore. And we're probably too reliant on that, and I think that's, what, 200 grand a year? I think we get just from, from that source.
Yeah, 90, 90.
Yeah, so that's, those are things that are going to go away over time. It may not be in 2021, but it's gonna happen.
Gotcha. But it, just, just to point out, though, Nancy, to, to your point, however, the, the last year's revenue, you're looking at 1.4, 4.1 million. Looking at budgeting this, this year, 4.8 million, but a portion of that is gonna be your increase in your sanitation. And that's just the general fund I'm looking at, I'm not looking at the other funds in total. So again, I, I just need, because I, I know when, when it's mentioned about adding to the, to the different funds, and increasing those different funds, some of that's gonna be payroll, right? And it's understandably, that's where it's going and coming from. I'm just having a hard time saying, okay, well, we're, we're talking, and let me get the, the, the specific here. I'll give you an example of why I'm concerned. I'll look at the-
Funds account.
The rec fund, and say that we're substantially increasing that, we're looking to substantially increase that. Was that 160,000? Oh, no, hold on, that's, hold on, I'm looking at the wrong, I do know that there was an increase, I'm looking at the wrong place, though. The recreation fund, you're looking at adding to it $50,000.
Correct.
That would be the entire amount we would need to cover salary increases. So when, when I look at it that way, I'm going, okay, well, if that's the case, and we're raising it because we need to cover these salaries-
Keep in mind that some of that is also your property maintenance. Keep in mind that some of that is also your property maintenance.
I do, I do, and that's why I wanna go over it with you, because I wanna understand why it's increasing that substantially year over year, and I get what, we have Patriots Park, however, that's mowing, right? And that's...
Yeah, keep in mind that, you know, the Borough has added properties. Patriots Park was added, and when Morrisville ambulance squad imploded and the Borough took over the EMS building, we took over the maintenance responsibilities for those two facilities without any additional appropriation of funding, so those things add up.
Understood, and that's what I wanna go through with you, because that's what's not adding up to me.
Well, the fire fund is entirely based on millage. They get the entirety of the millage dedicated to them.
It's just an in and out. Count 05, 4, 5, 4.
Yep, I got it. You have that handy, I don't remember what we have in there.
Well, you should always have a contingency. What are you asking, where it's coming from, or... Because it's as an expense, and so let's see where...
It's been the same amount for the last three years, okay. Yeah, last year shows what was spent, so if nothing was spent on it, there'd be nothing in the last year column. Sure.
Maybe reduce, but I wouldn't take it all out. I just think that, again, this budget is your best guess, and if you really strip it, you could be in worse shape. But, you know, 26, if we didn't need the 26, maybe make that 15.
Yeah, if you want us to carry no contingencies or lower contingencies than what we already have, we can reduce them. Well, this isn't what Scott did for contingencies, this contingency line has been in here since before I came here. Yep, and some are used, most actually, and some are not.
Can I go back to the...
I can tell you what the contingencies are. I'm not recommending that they be changed, but I can give you a list of them, yes.
What they were last year.
Sure.
I'd also like to point out that the rec fund is also, there's no restriction on the rec fund, so if you run into, you know, a little bit of trouble, I just, I believe in the contingencies. Now, if we're talking two mils worth, maybe I don't believe in two mils worth, but let's see how many. You mentioned the ambulance building. As far as the physical building itself, are there things that we have to fix, or is there any major improvement that needs to take place this week, this month, this year? I'm sorry, next year?
That's a lot of questions. Can you give me one at a time?
I'm so sorry, next year.
Yes, no, there's none foreseen next year, we did just recently have to replace the electric hot water heater.
Okay, thank you.
Always.
I have a question about just the format. Is it possible to get, because looking at this, you gave us the amount that was spent last year, would it be possible to add in the amount that was budgeted last year, and also a column that shows us the difference between your proposed budget this year and last year's budget? I mean, essentially, that's what's in the drive where we look at, is which ones have the largest difference, and that's the best place to start.
Thank you, I'd like to column across to be, have more.
If I could get an Excel copy emailed to me, that would be super, super helpful.
Sure, sure. We will send the Excel document to everyone like we did last year.
Yep.
You guys are a little ahead of us, because this is all the kinds of stuff that we usually do after you adopt the proposed budget, because when you adopt the proposed budget, it also publishes it and makes it available for public comment. These are the things that usually happen between adoption of a proposed budget and in the final, but we'll get on it.
Also, if I can have a request, that if you send, in whatever format you send it out, could you please just date it and say revision, and the date that's revised? Thanks.
No problem.
No, you don't need one.
Oh, yes, just FYI, I handed all of you a booklet this evening, it's a draft of the updated comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission has been working on with the Bucks County Planning Commission. It is out for public comment and review, and it'll likely be made available to council for adoption at your December meeting.
Awesome.
Is it on our website?
It is.
He's a step ahead.
May, it's your copy.
Thank you, sir.